You ready? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the school committee meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Before you, you have an agenda. May I have an approval?
Some more.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. I will start to open up with public comment. Mr. Dixon, come down, please. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is David Dixon. My wife and I retired here full-time about twelve years ago. And I want to talk about two thousand twenty-four MCAS scores. First, let me say that the Inkie M did not do the high school justice. The newspaper reported that the high school, quote, fared slightly better, unquote, than the intermediate and middle schools. In fact, the high school performed much, much better than the other schools. Indeed, for the first time since Massachusetts added the high school MCAS science test in two thousand and eight, higher percentages of Nantucket High School students met or exceeded expectations in all three tests. The first time, all three tests, they met or exceeded expectations since two thousand and eight. For example, fifty-five percent of Nantucket high schoolers met or exceeded expectations in science versus forty-nine percent statewide, fifty percent in math compared to forty-eight percent statewide, and sixty-eight percent in English compared to fifty-seven percent statewide. The girls crushed their statewide female competition across the board, especially in English, where seventy-eight percent of Nantucket High School females met or exceeded expectations. And the high school more than held its own when it came to exceeding expectations in all three exams. It was a great year for the high school. Tonight is AP night, and I won't steal Mandy's thunder, except to tell you to pay close attention when she talks about the three groups of Nantucket's AP scholars. I will also note that AP Biology and Chemistry are universally regarded as two of the hardest, toughest AP tests, so wait for those numbers, too. They are exceptional. Alas, two thousand twenty-four MCAS results for the intermediate and middle schools were not only objectively quite poor, but many of them also reflected major declines from two thousand twenty-three, which were disappointing in themselves. At the intermediate school, only twenty-one percent of students, compared to thirty-nine percent statewide for grades three through five, only twenty percent of Nantucket students met or exceeded grade-level expectations in English. That twenty-one percent figure is down from thirty-two percent last year. Compared to forty-three percent statewide meeting or exceeding expectations in math in grades three to five, only twenty-five percent of Nantucket students met that standard, down from twenty-nine percent in two thousand twenty-three. Just twenty-eight percent of Nantucket fifth graders met or exceeded expectations in science in two thousand twenty-four, down from thirty-eight percent the previous year. Math performance at CPS continues to be a major disappointment. For the second year in a row, only twenty-two percent of Nantucket students in grades six through eight met or exceeded expectations in math. For both years, a statewide average of thirty-nine percent of grades six to eight students met or exceeded expectations in math. CPS students meeting or exceeding expectations in English declined from thirty-two percent in two thousand twenty-three to twenty-eight percent in two thousand twenty-four, while eighth-grade science results in two thousand twenty-four held rather steady at thirty-four percent meeting or exceeding expectations compared to thirty-nine percent of eighth graders statewide. Finally, for now, the most striking MCAS statistic for Nantucket Public Schools is this: For the second year in a row, only one percent of Nantucket students in grades three through eight exceeded expectations in math. Statewide in two thousand twenty-four, eight percent exceeded expectations. To repeat what I said in my last public comment, we are utterly failing the vast majority of our highest aptitude students and/or our hardest-working, high-achieving students. Amazingly, and I'm almost done, not a single Nantucket student among the three hundred and thirty-five students in grades five, six, or seven, not one out of the three hundred and thirty-five exceeded expectations in math in two thousand twenty-four. Not one. Something is very wrong, especially considering that taxpayers are flooding Nantucket Public Schools with fifty million dollars per year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon.
Thank you.
Anybody else for a public comment? If you could speak up a little bit.
I have to sit back here and I can't hear. I don't know if your mics are on.
This is for the television. It's not for, um, but I'll, I don't think this helps you, does it, Diane? Yeah. I don't know that we can turn the fan off. I'm sorry. Seeing no other public comment, I will close that. And we have Dr. Hallett on the phone with us. And, um, Dr. Hallett, can we have your superintendent's report, please?
Yes, yes, of course. Good evening, everybody. Um, my sincere apologies that I cannot be there in person, um, but I appreciate the opportunity to provide my remarks via telephone. So I'm going to start with a little safety and security update. I just wanted to provide, um, an update on where we are with our safety and security so far this school year. We have had fire drills at each of our buildings within the first week of school, which is the norm. They've gone very smoothly. And two of our four schools have also had lockdown drills, which have gone very well as, um, as well. Raptor Technologies, which is our new entrance security system, is going very well at each of our front entrances with quicker and simpler ways for our front office ESPs to register guests, uh, to provide them with sticker badges as opposed to lanyards, which is much easier. They don't end up walking away, which sometimes happens with lanyard badges. And, um, it also allows the system to remember the visitor for their next visit, which means the process is much smoother the next time. We do have one Raptor device at each front office at each school, and we are also installing Raptor devices at the community school entrance and the special services entrance at, um, NES. And we will have a device installed at the community pool at NHS. Those are entrances that are accessed by the public regularly without having to go through the front office. While we are not, we have not been using Raptor yet for our safety drills, our hope is to have that up and running and happen, um, for our next scheduled drills at each of our school later this year. We are due to hold a safety and security meeting with the Nantucket Police Department and Nantucket Fire Department, um, to be sure that we are, um, following procedures appropriately with drills and safety plans. And, um, we will, we will also be installing new Verkata security cameras that will be replacing our old, um, or more current, our current cameras, which are getting older and showing their age. The new cameras have a much better quality of, uh, of, um, vision and with pixels. And, um, the six that we have already installed of these new cameras are working very well, and we've been able to install them in places that have been needing cameras, so, um, we're very pleased about that. Safety and security of our schools is really one of, uh, the utmost important pieces. And as you will hear later, the theme name is one of my superintendent goals this year. Uh, I wanted to, uh, send a thank you to all of the principals and also to Melissa Devitt, Director of Curriculum for Humanities, and Chip Clooney, Director of Facilities and Grounds, who have been point people, um, with the new safety and security measures that we put into place this year. And I'm very grateful for their expertise and willingness to take this on this year. So I will move on to school committee vacancies unless there are any questions about, um, safety and security.
Any questions? No questions, Beth.
Okay. So, um, as you are all aware, we will have a school committee vacancy when our chair, Pauline Proch, steps down after her final meeting on November twelfth. While she will be leaving some big shoes to fill, we are receiving applicants, uh, who are interested in interviewing for the eight-month vacancy. We have advertised in the Nantucket Current and the Inquirer Mirror, and so far we have had five individuals who have shared their interests. The last day that we will be accepting written applications is this Friday, October eighteenth. These should come in the form of an email to the superintendent or school committee clerk. We would appreciate a resume or an explanation of, um, interest and also of, um, qualifications. That is very helpful. So again, up until this Friday, October eighteenth, end of, uh, end of workday is when we will be accepting applications. After that, the school committee will begin reviewing up resumes and letters of interest, and then will schedule interview, um, interviews for applicants in one workshop meeting or possibly two, depending on how many applications are submitted this evening on Friday, um, where each candidate will be asked the same question. And after these interviews, the deliberation on a final candidate, um, that, um, that will be presented to the town select board must occur at an open meeting. So after the school committee's decision on who to recommend to the select board, um, they will decide and determine the final outcome of the vacant position. So the school committee clerk will be sending an email to all of you, school committee members, on, um, shortly with some, with several workshop meeting dates for interviews between October eighteenth and November, uh, probably November first, simply because we need some time to then determine whether or not we will create a new open meeting to deliberate, um, on, um, the decision, or, um, whether we would, or whether you would deliberate on November twelfth, which is the regularly scheduled meeting. So, um, that is the, the, uh, kind of sequence of events, and I'm certainly happy to answer questions, uh, that you might have right now. And, uh, after that, um, Chair Committee, School Committee Clerk, Katie Bedell, will be sharing, uh, dates that work, uh, finding dates that work for everybody to be able to, um, handle these, uh, meetings, whether they're workshop meetings or an open meeting to deliberate on the final outcome for the vacant position. So happy to answer any questions.
No questions. No questions, Beth.
Okay. Then thank you very much, and, um, I will be back to share my goals later in the meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to presentations and discussions, I'd like to invite, um, Mandy Vassal, Principal of Nantucket High School, to come up and give us our advanced placement results.
We do. Mm-hmm. There hasn't much left on it.
Oh, yeah. So should I just do that? Okay, good. I see I can just scroll up right as we go. Thank you for, um, having me this evening. I, you know, I always like to do this because I, like Mr. Dixon, I like to brag on our students and what a great job that they do. And Jen, Tracy, and I were just talking today about our AP results and, um, our students who take the AP courses. And I want to say one thing that to everyone that we were talking about today is that regardless of what the scores are, um, when students take the AP courses, it's not just about the score that they make on their AP exam. It's really about the experience that they get in the classroom with, um, the rigor of the AP level courses. And that truly is what the most important part is, because that is what is going to prepare those students for what they can expect when they're in classes in college. And, um, because, you know, some students maybe, maybe they, the best they can do is a two, because they're just not test takers. Maybe some of them, you know, we have some that every test they take, they make fives. And I think that's amazing. But I think it's most important that our students have the experience. And what I really think is amazing about the class that just graduated or last year's administration is that we had a hundred and fourteen students who took AP exams. Now, um, in case you, everyone's not familiar, every student who takes a AP course is required to take the AP exam. That is part of the program, um, and that is the expectation that we have. The total number of exams taken of the hundred and fourteen students is two hundred. So that speaks well of our students who are taking two, three, and we even had a few students last year who took four AP classes. I personally don't recommend that. I think that's a very rigorous schedule at the high school level, but we have students that not only did they take those courses, they did well. The average score, um, percentage of students who scored three or higher was fifty-nine percent overall. We break that down by classes. The number of exams by tenth grade, and all of our students at the high school can start taking an AP class in tenth grade. The, um, tenth grade, twenty-five exams were taken. The mean score was three point two, three point five two, and, um, eighty-eight percent of those students scored a three or higher. In the eleventh grade, ninety-one exams, the mean score was two point seven three, and fifty-five percent of students scored three or higher. And at the senior level, eighty-four exams were taken, the mean score was two point eight eight, and fifty-four percent of those students scored three or higher. So let's take a look at, um, AP awards. So an AP scholar is granted, um, to students who receive scores three of high, three or higher on three or more AP exams, and that's not necessarily in the same year. This is what Mr. Dixon was talking about. This is all of the exams that they have taken, all of the AP courses that they have taken, and it could be tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. It could just be what they've taken in eleventh grade, um, but it's a three or higher in the, um, the, uh, exams they've taken. An AP Scholar with Honor is granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point two five on all AP exams. That's not just on one of three that they took, but on all of the exams, they scored three point two five or higher, um, in that they had three or higher on four or more of the exams. AP Scholar with Distinction is granted to students who receive an average score of at least three point five on all AP exams taken, or, and scores of three or higher on five or more of their exams. So students who are awarded this, um, they really have done a lot of work and they deserve the recognition. This, um, actually, that total scholars, that should be twenty-three, not sixteen, so just so you have the math correct. The, um, number of scholar, AP Scholar students was thirteen with an average score of three point oh three. Number of scholars that received the AP Scholar with Honor was five with a three point eight one average score. And the number of students that received AP Scholar with Distinction was five with an average score of four point oh six. That's a pretty good score. So we take a look at the, um, breakdown of the, um, AP exams that we administer and that our students took. This is the number of students, what their mean score is for the high school, what the mean score is for the state of Massachusetts, and then the numbers on, um, the, um, those students who received a five, a four, or a three. I believe if you take a look at biology, there were twenty-three students. Their average score or mean score was a three point five four. Eleven students, um, scored a four, three with a five, and six with a, um, three. And if I'm doing my math right, that's twenty out of twenty-three students. Did I get that right, Dr. Lepre?
I missed that.
Twenty out of twenty-three. On the calculus, um, not quite as well calculus and chemistry, but they're both pretty difficult exams, but we did have students that scored, um, at least a three. English language and English Lit, I think, are, um, to be noted. They, out of thirty-seven students for English language, it's, uh, what is that, nine, ten, seventeen, twenty-two students scored a three, four, or a five. And in English Lit, there were eleven out of eighteen students who scored a three, four, or a five. Sixteen students in the U.S. History scored a three. So I think our students overall did really well. I think that it speaks well to our students, but it also speaks well to our teachers. So a breakdown for, um, race, ethnicity, um, race and ethnicity, and this is broken down by grade level. And this is, um, this is data pulled from the AP College Board. They didn't used to do this, because if you remember, Pauline, I used to, Joanne, um, Joanne Johnson and I would sit through and go through everything, and she helped me with this. So this is relatively new on the AP College Board. But we had, um, seven students who are, um, identifying as Asian descent, seven that are Black or African-American, fifteen Hispanic or Latino, eighty of our students, um, are white, and then two or more races, we had, um, five students there. So we do, we are getting a few more, um, different cultures that are taking, um, the upper-level courses now. So why score a three or higher? The, the main reason why they say you want to score a three or higher is that that's an indicator of how you'll do at the college level. A lot of colleges or some colleges still will accept a three, and they will grant credit for that. Most favorable is a five, but some colleges will still take a four, a three and a four. Five-year score summary. I always think it's interesting to see this, because if you look at the number of exams, the number of students and the number of exams over the five years, I, I personally find that interesting. So if you'll take a look at the number of students who have taken the AP courses from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four, um, it, we had a little bit of a dip in two thousand twenty-three, but if I recall, I think that was a smaller senior class. But the number of exams, um, really went up last year from the previous year. AP students that score three or higher in two thousand twenty-four was seventy-nine, and then percent of total AP students with scores three or higher, um, almost seventy percent of our students scored three or higher. So I thought you might like to see this as well, um, is, um, for this current school year, these are the, um, AP classes that we are offering, that students are taking, and the number of students that are taking each of the classes, and the teachers as well. And I definitely would like to recognize Ms. McDonald, Mr. Albusaidi, Mr. Gregorich, Mr. Zackman, Mr. Curatek, Ms. Fanneth, Ms. Lyons, Mr. Lucas Hayes, and Ms. Wigan, who... Not only do they offer that rigor in the classroom, they also do, um, Saturday mock exams. They have students come in at seven o'clock in the morning, and they work with, you know, they do, um, help sessions or they start doing assessments, um, at seven in the morning. I know Mr. Albusaidi has actually already had evening sessions and a Saturday session for help sessions, um, for AP Calculus. He has thirty-three students in AP Calculus in one class. So I, I, I think it's important to recognize our teachers, because they're really doing a lot of work. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, that Ms. Sullivan over there has taken one of these AP courses. That's a, uh, dual enrollment class, correct? Is it the ASL?
It's the psychology class.
Oh, the psychology. I thought you were still doing the ASL. So we do allow students to take the AP courses for dual enrollment also, or, um, so that they're doing the online version if we don't offer it here at the school. And that, oh, one thing I did forget, um, for Mr., um, Mr. Dixon's benefit, just so that you know, um, we do have, um, so this year we've changed up our pre-calculus a little bit, so we're offering an accelerated course of, um, algebra, Honors Algebra II, and, um, Honors Pre-Calculus as a combined course. We have fifty-five students taking that class, and Honors Pre-Calculus are, um, we have thirty-six students taking that class. So again, if my math is right, that's eighty-five, ninety-one students who also are eligible to take, uh, they can still take the AP exam. It's a pre, AP Pre-Calculus that we chose not to offer, because we felt like that this was a better route for our students and a better pathway, but they will be encouraged to take the AP exam. So we'll see how they did next year.
Thank you, Mandy. Tim, questions?
I think it's interesting to look at the breakdown.
I do, too.
Um, I think that there's some tough classes there, and the kids do well.
I think the diverse nature of our students has actually increased over the last three or four years, too, and I'm glad to see that, because I think that that's important.
Ms. Marilda?
Um, actually, I do have a question. How often do we have these classes in, you know, I guess, from my own personal knowledge, like how often do they meet per weeks, per week, or?
So the way that our class rotation is, is four times a week.
Four times a week.
So they're, um, in class on, so with our change in our schedule this year with the extra ten minutes, our classes are fifty-nine minutes Monday through Thursday and fifty-six minutes, fifty-six minutes on Fridays. So they, um, all of our classes meet four times a week.
How about the classes that are not given here, like the UC San Diego?
So those are, those are pretty, usually those are self-paced, so they can, they can actually join those classes, they have five days a week.
Uh, another, out of curiosity, how does sign language work? Is it Zoom?
That's a really good question. I'm gonna have to get back to you on that answer, because I, that, I thought that was interesting when I saw that that was being offered.
I mean, it's amazing that it's, it gets offered.
There's, there's actually quite a few online platforms that do offer the sign language. As a matter of fact, Nora might even have more information about that than I do on how is, as far as an online. For the online courses, most of those courses that are self-paced, they can actually do those on the weekend as well. Do you know how that works on?
Yeah. So I haven't taken that class, but I had a friend who did, and it seems like there's not really Zoom meetings for it. It's more like videos and, you know, written explanations of, you know, learning sign language, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. Good question, though. Good question.
I'm so glad to hear you use the word rigor. Makes me very happy. I, um, it, it's true, just looking at the, um, ethnicity breakdown, that the Asian and Black, African-American populations are considerably smaller at the school anyway.
Yes.
Right. So then that would be reflected in that number as well.
Yes, I think so. And I could definitely do the math for you at some point and share that with you, but I think it is reflective of what our overall, um, total population is.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mandy. I'm glad that they're now doing the breakdown of, uh, race, so that you don't have to sit there, because this is so challenging for, um...
For full disclosure, Joanne Johnson does most of the math, would do most of the math for me.
Um, kind of the pushing back with Laura's comment, it, it, and I, I know that you do classes, I know you do an evening for parents to talk about AP, um, but it's, to me, it's, we still seem low on the numbers of kids, um...
Yep. We would agree with you on that. We would agree with you on that, for sure.
And I don't know what the answer is, but it's just, um, you know, do we talk to our kids early enough? Do we start talking about this in ninth grade? Do we start talking about it in eighth grade, so they can stop seeing and thinking and, and preparing? I don't, I don't know, but, um.
Good questions, and I, I don't know what the answer is. Um, I am um encouraged that the numbers are higher in the last few years. So I do think that that's a real positive.
I agree.
Um, I think that there's still a little bit of fear in taking an AP class, um, because it is more rigorous and there is more homework and there's summer work that they have to do. And so I, I mean, that's really just my own personal opinion. I don't have data to support that. But I do believe that that is one of the things that causes kids to shy away. We do see students who will sign up for AP classes, um, and, you know, they'll get their schedule. They'll find out the summer work in June. And come August, when it's just about time to start school, they're saying that they want to drop, because they didn't do the summer work.
Mm.
So we, we do see some of that. So that is, I, I do believe that that is um part of the issue.
Have we ever held a student forum, like students who are finishing up their AP for the younger grades, just doing a sort of question and answer?
I think that they, I think that some of the teachers have done that informally. I don't know that we've done something formal, but I think that that's a good idea, to do something like that, similar to our um panel that we do in December, whenever our graduates come back and talk with the current seniors.
Reason I'm just thinking of it is I hear conversations at the house often. And when kids are at the house doing their homework, the younger students are asking questions or asking about the teacher or asking about what they're learning. So, just, that's why I say that.
Yes, I think it's something certainly worth, um, giving it a try.
If I may, through the chair. Uh, just, what is the breadth of the summer work? Is it on their own? Is it a class? What, what's that component like?
No, it is independent work that they do over the summer. It's prob- most of the time, it's reading. Uh, but there is some written work that goes along with it, so that they're prepared to start the class in September.
I see, thank you.
Nora, questions, comments?
No questions.
Help me out here.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mandy.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Do you want to stay up here for your school improvement plan?
Oh, sure, why not?
Because you're first on the agenda.
Okay. This one's gonna be super quick. Um, so, as you know, we do this every year. And I definitely want to thank um Jen and Tracy for the work that they've done to help out with this. We also have had our um teachers take a look at our school improvement plan. Our school council members have taken a look at our school cau- our um school improvement plan. Um, and thanks to Dr. Howlett, who helped out, you know, with some updates. So um, we have, we have adopted and continued with um four goals for the high school and for our initiatives for the school year. Um, always looking to increase and improve our student outcomes and achievement. Just want to pass up on the MPS part here. So, um, if you take a look at our first goal, it looks like it's actually on page nineteen, if you're following along on a digital copy. A two-year goal, by June two thousand twenty-six, the high school will increase student collaboration and communication in classrooms by increasing use of sheltered English immersion strategies and practices for multilingual learners. And um, we said by June two thousand twenty-six, and thank you to um Barbara Cohen for helping out with this. We said um two thousand twenty-six, because we're going into, starting tomorrow, we are starting a full year of uh training for our teachers. And I say a full year, because we're actually reserving um a few training hours for when we return in August for next school year. So that we are ready to go and um, you know, kicking off the school year. What we're looking for is that teachers are integrating the um, the SEI strategies as part of their instruction. And that it's not one more thing to add to their plate, but it's part of what they're already doing. But we're going to identify those strategies better and ensure that they are using them with instruction to help reach our um L students and help them embrace the learning in the classroom. So we have, tomorrow, we had, we, the consultants are coming in tomorrow for a full day. They're gonna do learning walks um through our classes. We have an afternoon professional development with all of our staff. And then we have um two more half-days to come that will be broken up by content level. And then we will save a three-hour section um for August next year. But we'll also have a couple, um, three or four one-hour EWD sessions with the consultants. Then, um, we also, um, district-wide, we're taking on professional learning communities as um an initiative in our professional learning uh community action plan. Where for, at the high school, our learning communities are by content area, so by department. Our teachers have actually already had three full professional learning uh PLC meetings. And they're looking at student work, looking at what student achievement and student outcomes are, and identifying those um learning focus areas and what those learning targets are, and then what will the outcomes be, and how do they know that? How are they measuring that? And part of the action plan is if they take a look at the student data, they have not mastered those outcomes, what are we doing to ensure that we're going back um and help those students to master those outcomes? We, um, last year, we did a full-year training with UBD and uh UDL work and um developing or continuing UBD uh teaching units. And we have not dropped that. We don't have a consultant coming in this year, but we are still providing time for our teachers to continue that work. That is something that's gonna be ongoing, where they will update, revise, um, and add to the UBD units for each department. And then, um, we also um took on restorative practices last year, which we are continuing this year. Again, we don't have an outside consultant in, but Jen and Tracy have taken on um a huge lion's share of the work, which I sincerely appreciate. They are actually going to a training session next week to prepare for um a PD session with our teachers on November fifth. So we are continuing with um restorative practices. We believe that we're seeing some improvements overall and in the school. We still have some issues that we still need to work on, but overall, we're seeing some improvements with our um, the atmosphere and the student behavior. And um, and we think that uh restorative practices is making a huge difference. And those are our goals.
Perfect, thank you. Tim? Ms. Maralta?
No questions.
Laura?
No questions, thank you, Mandy.
Nora?
No questions.
I don't have any questions.
Oh, come on, Pauline, don't let me down.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Michael Horton. Yes, hi, Michael.
Good, good evening, Pauline, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Good. Hi, Michael Horton, Cyrus Pierce Middle School Principal. And I'm gonna present our two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school improvement plan. These first few pages um outlines the members of our school council. Um, one of the functions of school council is to advise and support the principal in writing and updating this annual improvement plan every year. Um, we have a message from Adrian and May. Uh, here you'll see probably consistent in all of our improvement plans um link back to the district improvement plan in terms of the strategic objectives and initiatives that the admin team has been working on over the last few summers. Our vision statement. And then we have four goals. Um, the first one is our largest uh goal and our newest goal. Um, you will see this goal um also in the NES and NIS plans. And this uh grew out of uh work this past summer with Ken Williams about ruthless equity. And it really um formalizes uh professional learning communities that have been happening at each building in a variety of different um versions and mode, modes. But I want to just quickly um talk about how the language that you will see here um will be just about verbatim in um NIS and NES um improvement plans. And I want to make sure I give credit to Donna Johnson and Becky Gianda, um, because they really got us started. So a lot of our language in this first goal um is actually borrowed from the work done at NIS. We just tweaked it slightly for a middle school model. Um, there are five key questions that teachers will be asking themselves um when they meet in PLCs for each subject area throughout the year. Um, identifying which essential learning outcomes have we ensured students learned? What evidence do we have that we've ensured mastery of essential learning outcomes for students? What are the specific names of students who require additional time and support to master essential learning outcomes? And then this is my favorite, and I really feel like this is the most important part of this goal. What additional time and support will the team provide to ensure students to master essential learning outcomes? So once those names are identified, you know, the professional learning community will start to brainstorm best practices. How can we bring those students up over the bar or the um, the target of that essential learning outcome? Um, and um, to Mr. Dixon's points earlier, you know, what actions will our team take to extend learning for students who've already mastered essential learning outcomes? If we can do that, the hope would be we'd see more students in that exceeding category on the MCAS. The other three goals um are continuations from last year's um school improvement plan. Um, it is one practice to not adjust your improvement plan um more often than every three years. It's, it's more of a overhaul every three years, um, as different initiatives and, and focus areas might change. Um, but more an annual tweak. So I'm here tonight to talk about that first goal of professional learning communities and then just remind everyone that our closest thing that teachers might call a student learning goal, something that's really concrete and measurable, is relative to our MCAS scores. Um, goal number two, which was um the same goal we had last year. During the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year, CPS will, will reduce the number of students in the not-meeting tier of each MCAS subject test to below fifteen percent. So unfortunately, in the last few years, um, those percentages have grown from, for, to twenty to thirty percent um of, of our students not meeting expectations on the MCAS. Um, our third goal, uh, ongoing CPS, and I give a lot of credit to the work that Agent Lombardi has been doing through leading a bunch of committees in our school. By June two thousand twenty-five, CPS will continue to focus on improving school culture and morale through mentoring, coaching, and collaboration. Um, we focus a lot on taking care of our staff, um, making our, our staff feel supported, um, some collegiality. We have some fun from time to time. Um, that is very important um at our middle school. And then lastly, um, we're entering year two of a big focus on responsive classroom at the middle school level. Um, responsive classroom has been in place, I think, about fifteen years now, um, since two thousand nine. Uh, that NES and NIS. Um, we kind of held off, because they had a couple of different versions of their middle school um model for responsive classroom. And we uh trained our core teachers last year. And this year, we're, we're training our um counselors and our special educators, um, our, and our teacher assistants, and any new hires. So a second um group is being trained this year, and that is still a very big focus um at CPS. What is not here, um, you know, you can't just keep adding more and more goals. In my opinion, that tends to belittle the goals, quality over quantity in this case. Let's do four goals well. Um, so that first goal, the PLC goal, replaced the universal design for learning goal that we had with KNOVAC for the past three years. Um, I assure you, that's still alive and well. Um, it's just you might see it in other columns here within bigger, broader goals for the school, that we are still working on student voice and student choice. Multiple means of uh expression, multiple means of engagement, um, multiple means of assessment. Um, so even though you may not see it um formally here in our school improvement plan, it, it still exists at CPS. How'd I do it time-wise?
Excellent. Excellent.
Thank you, Mike. Um, Tim? Ms. Maralta?
I don't have questions.
Laura?
I'm just curious, with a year to um reflect on responsive classroom, it seems, how do you, how do you feel about it? How?
So as someone who is there, you know, right from beginning when teachers brought responsive classroom forward at NES, when I was um Assistant Principal in turn with Dr. Carlos Colley fifteen years ago, um, it takes years to implement. Um, it needs to grow organically. It, it really should not be administration-driven, top-down. Um, so we're one year in. Um, I would like to say, um, the positives is that we're focusing on teachers connecting with students on a social level. The number one tenant of responsive classroom is that the social curriculum is just as important as the academic curriculum. Um, we do a wellness day. You know, we are trying to do um student, student activities where they might have a brain break in their classroom, um, just to build some connections between teachers and students. Um, teachers are adjusting their language. We, we have lots of um send starters of redirecting language, reminding language, and reassuring language. Um, that is becoming part of people's fabric and kind of their everyday nature. What we are not quite there yet is a consistent responsive classroom advisory meeting. Um, known as a morning meeting, um, twenty, twenty-five minutes um at the younger grades, K to five. Um, you know, those components of, you know, a, a, a welcome, um, a greeting, a share, an activity, and a message. Um, ours is very similar. But we don't have, we currently don't have an advisory set up. We don't have an advisory time at the minute. We have ten minutes of homeroom each day. Um, we can probably uh put some things in there and do one of those four um components of a responsive classroom advisory meeting in those ten minutes. But really, you know, when we work with the trainer coming back in November for the, the fourth of four days, um, the mission is to get that happening in every single classroom. It's just hard, where we took away our extended homeroom from last year. We wanted to add some more time on learning, because we added a, a seventh day. I think I talked to you about the, the schedule last year that enables us more flexibility. But our blocks went from fifty-eight minutes to fifty minutes. So it's a little bit of a challenge there. So that's something that we're still working on. Um, I just, we're not quite there yet for administration to say, teachers, I expect this every single block, every single group of students. You know, it's fine if homeroom teachers do it, but they're only connecting with those twelve, fourteen kids. It should be happening in every, like, section of students. Do you want to come on? You have, they can't hear you.
It's fine. Um, I think the end game goal is to have that type of setting of an advisory-type meeting or, or um kind of communication and collaboration in a content area focus versus sub-separate of like, kind of that social emotional. So I feel that our teachers want to see, how can I do that in my, my eighth grade math class or science class that's curriculum-based around that kind of talk and community work versus more about elementary morning meeting? And I think that's where we have some developing and confidence to build in our teachers, because they want to see the value and not it just be like loss and loss.
Right, right. Thank you.
Nora, any questions?
No questions.
Um, I don't have any questions, but just to comment and congratulations to you, Mike, and, and um Adrian and Tracy from earlier um years. I know it's a goal of improving your culture and morale in your school, but from what I understand, you're already way ahead. Um, and I, it just was uh uphill for you, and I think you've done a great job, so.
So, we had the, have that in place first. And, you know, I am competitive person, so I, I've heard what Mr. Dixon has said tonight. We have work to do. But I know we have the right people and, you know, academic rigor, um, raising the bar of expectations, that really goes back to our goal in one about PLCs. Um, we're gonna get there. And we did see some, I mean, I know the MCAS presentation will be another meeting. But grade seven, the first time in, in years, showed some improvements. And I know that um Mr. Weber has really um embraced Allison Mello's guided math workshop model of, of making math fun and engaging for students.
It's fantastic.
Well, I didn't want that to be unnoted, but thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next up is Becky Janda. Hey, Becky.
Hi. All right. So as you can see, they, all of our plans kind of look similar because we all are coming under the umbrella of the district plan. So we do start in the same way. We have our school council. Our school council has gone through this and talked about it. Our staff has had an opportunity to look at it and to develop their goals for the year based on it. But as we kind of go through, we do have a message that gives an overview of what our four main areas are. And as I go through those areas, we also embedded collaboration and communication within each goal as opposed to making that a separate goal, as that's a district initiative as well. When we take a look at our specific goals, we do start with the PLC goal. And as both my colleagues have said, this is a district initiative this year and something that we're all working on to make sure that our professional learning communities are getting together and really looking purposefully at what are the learning objectives that we want to make sure that all students leave the grade with. It doesn't say that we're not teaching to all the standards. We're always teaching to all the standards. But we're looking at what is the essential pieces that you're kind of saying, this is absolutely critical. You don't leave third grade without this. And then as a team, really working together to say, how are we going to get every student there? We also do look at entry points for some of our students because we know some of our students have special needs. And we want to make sure that they're working towards these essential learning standards or outcomes as well. But we want to make sure that we know what the entry is for each one so that we're getting kids stepped closer to where we want to be. And then as Mr. Horton said, making sure that we are taking students who are already there and extending it for them. So as he said, quite a bit of this will look similar. We're all doing pretty similar work. We're just tailoring it to our schools and to our teams. So the way we're doing at NIS is we have full teams, which are the grade levels combined with a teacher of English language learning, a special ed teacher, math interventionist, a reading interventionist, all getting together every other week to really dive into it. And then we do still have professional learning communities of like teams too because we do need our special ed team to really meet together and work on what they need to do together. Our English language teachers to meet together. So we're doing kind of an every other week model right now. Our second goal is taking the goal that we had last year, looking at math. Last year, our goal was about initially starting reveal math and making sure that teachers had the resources, that we were looking at all students, that we were using the data from that. This year, what we're doing is saying, we've kind of went through that year. We know the resources. Now we want to make sure that we're really picking and choosing correctly and that we're focusing also on fluency in math. And so for that, we are bringing in some supplemental materials and resources to make sure that all of our students have opportunities for not just building conceptual learning, but also really getting their fluency down and making sure that they have that foundation to be able to build on as they do more critical thinking in math. And then our third goal is building on what we had last year for belongingness and really trying to look at what areas can we really focus on for this? What, you know, coming in new last year and not really knowing the school. It was, we knew that we wanted to work on belongingness, but really kind of pinpointing like, what does that mean? And what does that look like for different groups is where we are this year. So we were able to really work with the school council last year and put out a family survey of different areas and found out strengths of where we are in belongingness. And then some areas where we felt like we really could improve. And so as a school council, we came up with three real specific tasks based on those surveys. And we've been working on that as a group. So we're, you know, we've started, we're, one of the things we're working on right now that we're in the middle of is just creating a handbook highlights for all of our NIS families. The handbook is lengthy and not, not easily read by a lot of people, I think. And so what we're trying to do is make that accessible to everybody. And we want to have that ready for parent conferences. And then we've already looked at our family nights and what specifically, what times, what dates, how often, how many we should have. So I'm excited about that with our school council. It's a really good group of people, and I feel like we're really looking at belongingness from that point of view. And then we're also looking as, trying to connect that back to our PLC goal, which is based on the book Ruthless Equity. And you can't have belongingness without having equity, but you also can't just stop with equity. You have to look at really our full goal is inclusion for all. And so we're doing that through kind of pinpointed professional development based on a book called Belonging Through a Culture of Dignity. And looking at what is it that we really want our culture to look like? And what do these words mean? And what do they look like in a classroom? So we'll be starting some of that work as we go into the winter. And then we also looked at how we could revise our school counselor's schedule to make them more available for in-the-moment belongingness situations and proactively looking at students bringing, able to pull more groups. So we did add the science, an extra science special so that our counselors are no longer a special. They're available all day. They're in classes. When they go in and do lessons, they're embedding those lessons in the actual classroom with the teacher there so that language can be carried over and all, it's a little bit more cohesive of a program, I think. That's our hope. And then our last goal this year is we've been working with their Director of Humanities, Melissa Devitt, to make sure that we are really looking at our literacy program. Obviously, looking at our MCAS scores, we know that literacy is an area of need. And so we're looking at what do we have? What are good components of a literacy program? Do we have those? And if we don't have those, how can we find them? We're looking at different programs. No program is perfect and no program teaches. We know our teachers teach, so we want to know what do they need to have in their hands to teach the students in front of them? And some programs are very good at teaching kind of right to sort of the middle-of-the-road student, but they don't necessarily have the resources for those that need to go above or those that need a little extra boost. So we're looking at all of that together and really hoping that that becomes a bigger goal next year for us to look at what resources are we going to use and how are we going to put that into play for our students?
Thank you.
Tim. Is Laura older?
No questions. Just, I think the alignment of the goals makes so much sense. And then it's not so jarring when a student goes from school to school. That template is already there, so. A lot of great work, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
No questions.
None for me. Thank you very much for all the hard work. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
All right, Kim, Laura, NES.
I'm walking with my readers on. So I hope I don't cause you to ask me a hundred questions because I think you're all asleep from the heat. I know that I have lost twenty pounds in my seat while waiting for my turn.
Maybe I should sit and you'll see.
Well, come on up. You know, it's warm. You could sit right next to me. Now I've woken you all up. So I am super excited about the goal that we have in common because this is a goal that I've had in my head for a couple of years. And Ken Williams really was terrific for us this summer. And I'm just scrolling through our school council here. But I want to be sure that I highlight a couple of things to hopefully not repeat everything that's been said by my colleagues. So in our message from Kim and I, we wanted to make sure we pointed out that there are three very important district-focused areas this year. And those are the things that sometimes get changed in the district improvement plan or certain areas that we're going to highlight. And this year, it's successful learning for all students through ownership and commitment, belongingness and inclusion through collaborative engagement, and physical, social, and emotional safety for everyone. So our strategic objectives and our initiatives, they haven't changed. So it's page five in the paper copy, and I'm guessing forty-four in the online copy. But that is the goal that everyone has talked about. And this really is, you will note in the NES plan, it takes three pages to talk about the action steps, the outputs, and the outcomes. But one thing I really want to share is it's extremely hard work to do this. And I really want to, and I know that Kim feels the same, I really want to highlight and celebrate the NES teachers who have really jumped on board with this. And for NES, and I believe NIS, we are just targeting ELA in math. And that's where we went to create our essential outcomes. But to really celebrate them because we did, Kim is our survey girl. And so our staff looked at the school improvement plan draft and gave us feedback on all of the goals. And the one thing that probably, they weren't allowed to leave a staff meeting without giving us feedback. So we got everybody's. We gave them time, but we got everybody's feedback. And the one thing that was noted in the survey is ninety-plus percent of all the responders shared they were so glad to have PLCs back. And you certainly know how important that is.
Yes, I do.
So when I, when I talk about celebrating that with our teachers, they are doing PLCs right now where they have been going through the standards and really trying to highlight what the essential outcomes will be. And they're also excited because they're saying things like, wow, that's going to change what we have on the report card. Which then makes us really excited because it should change what's on the report card. They are, we have set it up that at all four schools that administration is not a part of every single PLC. But we have found that certainly at NES, they're asking for us to come. And they're looking for us to weigh in and give feedback. And what do you think? Do you feel like we're on the right track? How's it going? So it just really, that to me speaks to communication and collaboration. And the other major part of this goal that I think Mike highlighted, the five questions. What I love in this goal is that the teachers get to see themselves as experts. And they get to share what's working for them with their colleagues to help that class. And so it's really hard, hard work. But I do believe this will take us pretty far for a long time. I don't ever want to change this goal.
That's awesome.
With all of the goals in the NES plan, which we did last year, and you'll note it at the bottom of our first goal, in parentheses, I have 1.1, and that pertains to the strategic initiative. Just how my, our goal is aligned to the district's strategic initiatives. And then the three areas of focus, how that goal is connected to those. Our second goal, much like Mr. Horton shared, we just started using a new resource, Reveal, last year, and teachers embraced it. And they were ready to go this year with some things that they knew they wanted to tweak or do better. And Allison Mello, who's been with us as a consultant for a few years, has really assisted in, they just went off, a group of our staff went off to see Reveal in action and see Math Workshop in action, Guided Math Groups in action. And so we have a representative from every grade level, special ed, and English language learners. They went off to see it, and they come back and report back to their team. So that's been great. But we did add, as Becky shared, it's essentially the same goal, but we added fluency, which we are really making sure that every teacher is doing thirty additional minutes of math across the week. Sometimes it's broken into three ten-minute groups or two fifteen-minute groups. But it is all about doing this fluency practice. And that has everything to do with what we feel strongly about at NES, building the foundation for kids. Our third goal is the ELA curriculum. And last year, we really put in phonemic awareness, which was something that whether we had journeys or our readers and writers workshop, we felt like phonemic awareness was something that was not being explicitly taught as well as it could be. And this is in alignment with brain research. And so last year, we said, you must use Hegarty as a resource and you must use foundations as a resource and really push that fidelity. So that's for pre-K, K and one, and two, all have foundations. And then K and one have Hegarty, which is phonemic awareness, and they love it. And if you see kids in the middle of a phonemic awareness lesson, it's exciting to watch. They're all clapping and scooping and moving their hands, and they're excited to do it. So this year, we added the decodable text. And that is an important tool, especially in our younger ages, for reading, knowing the sounds that letters make and being able to use those skills to determine words, which then become part of sentences, which make up text. So decodable text was a big piece added here. And then our last one, I give all gratitude to Mrs. Albertson because she is the queen of our surveys. And I'll just breeze into the room and say to Kim, I need a survey. And she's right there with the pad. What do we have to ask? What do we need to know? Or she'll say, I'm going to do a survey. I'm going to add it to this. And our staff have certainly grown used to that. And it's really a quick way to get a lot of information. And we're, I'm grateful that Kim does that so quickly. But also, our staff are grateful to be able to have the opportunity to provide feedback.
That's great.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Of course.
Dr. Lepri.
I, I have a couple. First of all, congratulations about the PLC and that communication and that feedback, having walked that walk. I'm so, I'm so delighted to hear that. And I'm curious about the impact of those additional ten minutes. Are you noticing a difference?
I'm noticing that it's happening. I notice it's, I'm not the right person to ask that question of. We'll certainly seek those answers for you. But I could tell you individually, I have been impressed by students in kindergarten who are quickly able to subitize. They are looking at a domino. They see five dots, and they are not counting dots, but they are five. And that is not something I've seen happen as quickly. And it's important because you want that automaticity. So I have seen that with a few kids that I just happen to be sitting doing some math with. But, but we can certainly seek that answer. Give us through trimester one to see how.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just curious.
Can, can we put that on a survey?
Yes, can you make a survey?
Please.
Thank you.
Nora? No comments.
We miss you. We're grateful to have your mom.
Couple of things, just remind me, and I should have asked this of Becky too, but we're doing assessments three or four times a year. I know you're doing, where the map is three.
Map is three times a year, yeah.
But so that's what you're really getting your information so that you can in September do, make certain adjustments for certain students and then again in January and then again.
So if you go through those five questions again, I'll just tell you how that plays into things. One data point. One data point, map is one data point. Our um, benchmark assessments, that's another data point. We do those three times a year. But so when you're doing the work of setting up your essential outcomes, that P L C work, right? So the first couple of weeks of a P L C was, okay, let's take a look at the standards. Okay, let's look at the ones that will give us the most bang for our buck. Which are the ones that are, Becky described this, are absolutely, not to use the word essential, but which are the ones that we really need those kids to have by the time they leave. So they've really spent a lot of time thinking about that. Then what they've done is um, looked at, how do we measure that essential outcome? And in some instances, they've said, oh, it's, it's on the map. Or, oh, well, that's one of the parts of the benchmark assessment. Or, yeah, that's gonna come up in our Unit Three Math Test. So they're writing those assessments as something that they know they wanna have that information for. And then they're looking at rubrics. And they're saying, what would be on the map test? What would be a four? And then all six or seven teachers at that grade level are saying, we commit to, this is a four. So that when I go back in my classroom with my eighteen kids, anybody who got, scored at that level, that's a four. And that way, that's calibrated across the grade level. So this is all the work they've been doing. And then they'll get to that stage where we get to come in and they will be listing all of the kids. And where are they? And so that's when they would look closely at map results. And Mandy Barsley and Melissa Devitt are coming this week or sharing information that they've sort of culled the map data to make it a little bit more user-friendly. But I would also say our staff is really pretty adept at using map because there are so many wonderful charts and reports that you can go in and get really great information. And then you can also get great ideas for how to support kids who have a struggle in long vowels or a struggle in uh, main idea or a struggle in addition within ten. And, and it'll give you some places to go to find those interventions so that that will become part of the conversation. And that, okay, now we're gonna go off and do this second level of work or tier-two work, those um, small groups to provide the extra support to get them to meet the essential outcome.
So I think you've just answered my next question, it's my last question.
See, I woke you all up.
You did. So maybe it's just because I'm in a position now of sort of being reflective and thinking of the, over the last eleven or so years. But I don't know how many Dr. Lepri's sat through of different curriculums that we've used for E L A and different math curriculums. And so I don't mean to just put this to you and I don't know that you will, can answer it tonight, but I just sort of have thought of, what are we learning over this process of time that we know now of what we're working on? And, and I heard some of the things that I think you might say. Um, as far as what, how do we know that we are on the right track? And that we're not gonna be back against three years later saying, we're gonna do another curriculum, we're gonna do this or that? Is that something that you can?
That's something that haunts me with regularity. Because I think we teach students, not programs. And um, I say that knowing that we also have humans who do that work, right? And so there is a necessity of having a resource or a tool. Especially when we think about some of our teachers who are young and may not have had years of experience on the pendulum swings that some of us have had. And they may need something like that to rely on. I come from a camp of really, you need to know all your stuff. And you need to recognize that this tool will help you the most with this. But don't use this part of it because that's better in this tool. And I don't believe that um, I know why we did journeys several years ago because it had everything it was supposed to have. But it just doesn't work for every kid. Um, and there are tools in it that can work for every kid, but not all of them. So um, at our school, which is pre-kated two, we really should be looking at a whole bunch of things to teach the different skills that kids need and strategies they need. I have not seen a resource here, or even in my previous life, that covered it for every kid.
Did you, would you say that our assessment and our regularity and our detail in the assessments are what is providing us clearer information or data than we might've had ten years ago? Is that a fair thought or not?
I think um, multiple data points give us the information we want, more so than saying, that's it, everybody must do math and we're throwing everything else out. Yep. And, and.
Hello?
Yes, I'm sorry, if I, if I may, when um, when Principal Kuvish is completely, I didn't, I wasn't sure you were finished. Sorry, Kim, just wanted to make a comment, but I will wait, thank you.
Go, go right ahead.
Are you, are you, were you gonna say something, Beth?
I was.
Yes, that's fine, Beth, go, go ahead.
If I may, through the chair, first of all, um, it is, one thing I wanted to add is that um, often we are at the um, mercy of the um, research that is done at the state level. And a lot of the changes in curriculum that are um, sometimes um, imposed upon us do come from um, state uh, state push, let's say. And in this case, with our, our situation with E L A, that is definitely um, an area that we have been, um, we have, we have been, many districts across the, across the state have been dealing with this. So, but I do believe that exactly what Kim is saying is that um, we are, um, we are looking at what is right for students, what is important and what is um, improving their achievement and growth, uh, not only in classrooms, but also on our, on our standardized test.
Thank you, Beth.
Sure.
Yep, you got it, Kim, thank you so much. Okay, now we're moving on to presentation of superintendent goals. Is somebody, um, oh, they're already up there. You did that. Magic.
Okay, I'm ready whenever you are.
Yep, we're ready, it's up on screen as well.
Okay, great, well, thank you, first of all, for entertaining an evening full of goals. Because we have talked a lot about goals and about alignment and about improvement plan, planning. So here's another addition to that. But um, I think one thing you will notice is that over the course of the evening, we have talked about some really important points in that um, alignment is, is key to success in our district. And um, I am so appreciative to the principals who have taken um, a real, a real um, belief in the uh, particularly in the professional learning community goal in each of their um, uh, school improvement plans, and you will see it again in mine. So uh, it is important that um, that again, there is alignment and that we see that not just um, across school improvement plans, across superintendent goals, but also with our district improvement plan um, for goals that the school committee sets for themselves. And also even down, drilling down to our individual teachers and um, uh, and administrators and their goals as well. So the alignment is really a very important part of that. So um, in the form that you see here, these are the goals uh, that I will be focusing on for twenty-four, twenty, um, twenty-five. Um, even though my um, my evaluation is a two-year evaluation, I plan to keep goals at a, at a one-year um, place with the ability to move them into an additional year if, if needed. So um, this is going to be a starting out point for twenty-four, twenty-five, but you may see some of these goals again in the following year based on how, how far we've been able to move along. So the first goal is a professional practice goal and that's sustaining a culture of belonging, of belonging and inclusion through collaborative engagement. Um, that was something that, that was mentioned not only in the N E S um, school improvement plan, thank you, Kim and Kim for doing so, but also in the um, opening day, as we discussed the, the district focus areas. And one of the important, important pieces was um, finding co, um, belonging and inclusion or equity and inclusion through collaborative engagement. So that is really an important piece to me and certainly to everyone else who's kind of tied that in. Um, so throughout the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I will continue to build a strong foundation for myself, for the district leadership team and for the Nantucket School Committee for the critically important work of creating and sustaining a culture of belonging and inclusion through collaborative engagement in the classroom. So um, the key actions and benchmarks, I won't read them verbatim, but I thought I would at least read the first part of the goal to you. Um, I'm definitely going to be focusing on certain areas um, along with the district leadership team um, around improving our working environment, improving uh, culture in our learning environment for students. Um, also, and, and particular things like um, sustaining responsive classroom practices uh, at N E S, N I S, you've seen that. And now CPS uh, in their, in their second year, so supporting Year Two of CPS and um, with responsive classroom. And I agree with what Mike Horton said earlier in that um, in that it does take a while for um, responsive classroom practices to be uh, fully integrated and fully ingrained. Um, so it is important to stay the course and stay the path because it does make a difference. And I think that um, both N E S and N I S um, administration and teachers can vouch for that. And my hope is that CPS will see and be able to reap, reap the benefits. And we as a district will be able to do that, going into the high school even, uh, after a period of time. So certainly responsive classroom, um, Year Two of restorative, restorative practices at N E S, that's important as well. Um, and that was a goal that came into Mandy Vassal's um, school improvement plan as she and, and her um, assistant principals also are gonna be focusing on that as part of their SIP. Faculty meetings being part of um, what's happening in the schools, the newly created professional learning communities, uh, which are different from some that we've had in the past. And I, I definitely want to make sure I am part of those and certainly have um, have my finger on the pulse when it comes to what is going on with, with teachers in their learning, not just in their classrooms, but also in their learning. And um, conducting learning walks with uh, with school and district leaders uh, to make sure that we are seeing um, these inclusive and equitable uh, practices being uh, put into place. I can, I can see this happening and wanting this to happen as soon as I'm able to uh, return to schools. And I think that this will be very important to make sure that um, that we are keeping our finger on the pulse of what the um, the, the culture of belongingness and inclusion is and what, how it's happening. So in the second point, I will continue my work with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents with the Ready um, Professional Learning. Uh, and this year, there is a specific learning um, uh, session called uh, Persuasive Communication About Race and Equity. It's a full-year um, professional development um, opportunity. And it, it is a really helpful in teaching superintendents and other um, district leaders to build structures and skills around having good discussions and having meaningful discussions around race and equity. As we know, um, Nantucket Public Schools has had moments where this has been really challenging in the past years. And um, it is a time when we can't shy away from this. It is really important that um, we continue to, to openly and appropriately discuss race and identity and race and equity. So I want to continue that and make sure that it is uh, it is sustained throughout the coming year and to, and continuing. Um, still looking at creating opportunities for support for our, our BIPOC students and educators, so affinity and alliance groups. We had a small uh, start to that at the, at the end of the spring last year, but I'd like to see that continue. So I hope to, to speak with um, principals about this and see how we can potentially incorporate this uh, going forward. So, and that is, that is certainly a discussion with the um, the school committee, uh, Subcommittee for Diversity, which uh, we have a meeting coming up soon in the end of the month, so. Um, and also, I'm hoping to work with some Massachusetts um, math-ready leaders to create a special year-long professional development um, around racial identity for school leaders, particularly principals, um, with the Old Colony Regional District. So not just our district, but districts beyond because it is really important work that superintendents have had an opportunity for and just some district leaders have had opportunities for. But we haven't let this come down to our principals. And, and for it to be really successful, uh, principals need to have opportunities that are similar to what we have um, with the, with the um, the Ready work. So my hope is that um, I can work with uh, other superintendents in the Old Colony Regional Districts uh, to make this happen this year. So uh, principals, I hope that you're interested and would be uh, willing and excited to participate in something like this as we move forward and, and kind of open up our discussion around race and equity in our school system. So that's goal number one. Uh, goal number two is our student learning goal. This is improvement in academic growth and achievement. Um, so throughout the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I will lead the district successfully towards improvement of student growth and achievement in E L A and literacy, math and science. Uh, and based on evidence from a variety of data points. And I, I list them. And then um, Nantucket Public Schools students will show typical to ambitious growth in E L A literacy, math and science in all grades, with particular attention to E L and former E L subgroup. The reason why I have chosen this subgroup in particular to focus on is because, if you remember, several months ago, we shared, I shared with you the Student Opportunity Act and um, how we needed to focus on a specific uh, group that was identified through a, um, through looking at our um, accountability and looking at our, our empath achievement. And the one group that is still very behind in not making the progress that needs to be made is our elves and our former elves. So this is an area that I really wanna focus on carefully. And I think you would, you saw that already in the district improvement, excuse me, in the school improvement plans, particularly the high school where S D I strategies are coming into play. And, and that is a very important um, goal that's going to be sustained over the course of two years. So some of the key actions and benchmarks, certainly professional development, as I said, uh, sheltered English instruction, um, instructional strategy at N H S, um, math curriculum, um, N E S, N I S and N H S. And Year One uh, of math curriculum at CPS. Um, and then continuing the math workshop model. And of course, Literacy Committee Investigation of New Curriculum Adoption. That would be, that would be coming up in the coming year. Um, this is a lot of work and a lot of things that I am supporting. Uh, and I am very proud of the principals, the uh, teachers who are involved, the directors who are leading the work. Uh, it is key to our success. And um, although our scores this year were not as, our achievement scores were not as um, high as we wish they had been, uh, there is still a lot to celebrate. And I do hope that those that um, are interested will come to our um, data, um, our, our data dive that we will be doing with the school committee on October twenty-ninth. Um, because our, our hope, our hope is that we can share that we have made um, actually great strides with our growth targets and accountability. And accountability does include um, student growth and achievement. So there's some areas there that I think we need to celebrate. I'm getting a little off track, my apologies. So um, I would like to work with principals, assistant principals and district directors um, to continue things like, uh, to, to continue to work with professional learning communities. Uh, and that is the initiative that we put into place this year thanks to Ken Williams, who really shared with us the importance of looking at those five essential learning outcomes. And um, I want to make sure that I'm fully supporting all of the work that's happening in the schools around this. And I, like I said, I'm very, very pleased to see how our principals, assistant principals and teachers have really embraced this. So I'm excited to dig into the work for this. Um, I also want to make sure that we are continuing our regular curriculum review cycle, um, which my hope is to be able to present um, to the school committee at some point in the near future. So I'm gonna move on to the next goal, which is a district improvement goal. And this is ensuring safe and secure learning and working environments for all. Um, so during twenty-four, twenty-five school year, I will focus on strengthening Nantucket Public Schools safety and security practices across schools and departments by examining current safety plans and drills, um, reviewing uh, district safety and security needs and putting into place structures and systems that support physical and social emotional wellbeing. Um, key actions and benchmarks include collaboration, regular collaboration with um, facilities and grounds, district leaders, school leaders and local authorities um, to ensure completion of a full safety audit with the N P S. a full safety audit with the NPS district, of the NPS district by an outside provider. This is already occurring, and, um, we will have a report hopefully in the next few months, which I will be sharing. And this will help us guide, this will help to guide our changes that need to be made and things that need to be, um, celebrated as we have, um, as we have put some new things in place that have been very good. Um, we definitely want to increase our lockdown secure and fire drills at a variety of times during the day so that we are most prepared, uh, that, and, and we can do this at any time. It is always, it is not always convenient for, um, a, a fire drill to happen or, or a real fire or a real lockdown issue to happen. And we need to be ready and have our teachers and students prepared. So we will be increasing some of those at the request of the, uh, police department and fire department. Um, we updated, or are continuing to update safety handbook and go bags to make sure that those are ready to go. Um, full implementation of Raptor technologies, I've been sharing with you some of that as we've gone on through the beginning of the school year, and I will continue to do so, um, as we continue throughout the year. Um, initial planning of, and of a Nantucket Elementary School vestibule with capital funds. Uh, this is very important. Uh, Nantucket Elementary School is the only school in our campus that does not have a protective vestibule. So this is something that I feel is, is very necessary around, um, the safety, especially because we have a lot of public coming in and out of that building, not just for NES business, but also for some other departments. And it is really key that we, um, start to put into place this vestibule. Um, continuing to update and enhance, and enhance some of the safety training for specific employees. Um, our classing guards definitely need to, um, have increased, um, safety training and, and others. So we want, want to make sure that we are, uh, fulfilling the needs that they, that they have in, um, protecting our children as they, uh, work regularly with them or, um, operate machinery, et cetera. So that is important as well. Um, in, with safety and security comes also safety and security for technology and special services. Um, so I want to make sure that we are also focusing on, um, our network and focusing on, um, working through, um, uh, safe, making sure we have, um, cybersecurity in place. So we will do a full network audit to determine problem areas with our network, um, yearly service agreements, uh, to ensure our network safety, cybersecurity measures put into place, and general student staff protection from cyber threats. We have had two cyber attacks over the course of, uh, ten years, and it is important that we, um, determine how to improve our cybersecurity and, um, and make sure that our network is safe. Um, certainly ARC Ed, which you've heard me talk about, um, that is an important mandated training that all NPS staff and coaches are doing, and this is incre- increasing and improving, um, that, uh, that in, in that we can get things done faster, and certainly, um, it is, uh, high-quality training. So, um, also regular meetings with our Cape Cod Collaborative administrators around, um, about, around the bus, busing. This is an ongoing problem that you have heard about all the time. And we really are trying our best to work with the, the Cape Cod Collaborative to make sure that we have, um, safe, uh, ways for our students to be picked up and dropped off, and to figure out how to find solutions for issues around overcrowding on buses as our population continues to grow. But we have trouble to find, uh, bus drivers to, uh, to manage the, um, the additional busing needs. So, uh, finally, strengthening so- uh, social, emotional, and behavioral support for all students. We have student support centers, bridge programs, and other programs that have started. I want to continue to, um, to build these programs throughout the course of the year, uh, to make sure that our students have access to them and can continue to, um, to take advantage of the offerings that we have to support them. If we have students who have behavioral issues, students who have substance use issues, and I'm, uh, and I'm thankful for those who have been able to put these things in place, and I want to support them fully. So I'm going to move quickly to the last, um, district improvement goal, which is, um, strengthening partnerships across district and community. So, um, by the end of the year, I will continue to increase communication and collaboration between myself, staff, students, families, and community groups to strengthen partnerships where collaboratively on essential community issues and share important information, uh, seek feedback, and, um, listen to a variety of diverse voices. So I hope to be highly visible once my medical condition changes and, um, and certainly accessible to the, um, the Nantucket Public Schools, um, throughout visits, regular classroom walkthroughs, um, you know, as much as I can, as much as I can do, it is wonderful to be amidst students, amidst parents, and, um, I want to be as, as fully involved as I can all year. Um, I want to continue to collaborate with, uh, community partners, uh, to keep building those important partnerships that we have that allow us to rely on these, uh, organizations when we are in need, and to partner with them for larger initiatives, uh, across the dis- across the district and across the community. So it's real important, especially around youth, uh, behavioral and mental health, um, community programming, um, uh, with, uh, educator mental health, et cetera, and, um, certainly community service, um, to support more school career opportunities for our high school students. Um, I want to maintain weekly communications, but I have a new piece I'd like to put into place, which is a new superintendent's quarterly newsletter that will go out to staff, school committee, and NPS families. Um, this hopefully will be of interest to, uh, to everyone so they know what's going on in the district from a district perspective as opposed to just a school perspective. Um, I want to continue to build capacity with the student advisories that I have built at each school, which is such a joy in my, uh, in my time in schools, is really talking to students and understanding what they are, um, hoping for, wishing for, and, uh, dreaming for in their time in schools. Um, I want to attend more, um, more meetings, of course, uh, of our additional, um, uh, meeting, meeting, uh, organizations, MAC, ALPAC, et cetera, and certainly with the technology department, we, we are embarking upon a full implementation of the new district website by the end of this calendar year, December twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth. So that was a long explanation of goals. I do hope that, um, you have, if you have any questions, I will talk one moment to the alignment column, which is to the, to the le- to the right. You will see that my goals align directly to what the expectations are from the Department of Education for superintendents, um, and also our district strategies, strategy and strategic initiatives, and also the school committee goals. Our school committee goals are from last year, but I know that we are, um, planning on making some adjustments this coming year. So, um, it is important, alignment is important. It is what makes us successful in a school district, and I do hope that you will see the alignment between my goals and the goals that were presented in the school improvement plans and what we presented as a district. And I'm excited to dig into the work as soon as I can. So I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Beth. Tim?
I don't have any questions right now, Beth.
Thank you.
Is Marilda?
No questions.
Laura?
No questions right now. Thank you, Beth.
Yep, um, no questions for me either, Beth.
Thank you.
Very detailed, and thank you for the links, and I appreciate, um, the thoroughness on it. So thank you.
Bye.
Okay. Any, any other conversation from that? No? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, moving on to, uh, discussions and votes to be taken. May I have an approval, please, for the donation from Suzanne and Paul Valangea to the Nantucket High School Woodshop for a thousand dollars?
Move it through.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
May I have an approval for the donation for, from Laura Lamb to the Nantucket High School Woodshop for a thousand dollars?
Move it through.
May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a vote approval, please, for the twenty-four, twenty-five NES, NIS, and CPS student handbook?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May I have an approval, please, for the meeting minutes of October first, twenty-twenty-four?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. May I have an, um, approval, please, for the transfers and invoices?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. All right, Nora, you are up.
So on Thursday, October third, the Teen Truth program, um, started back up again. This is a program that started a few years ago at the school, and basically, it's a peer-to-peer program that upperclassmen coach underclassmen through. And it incorporates topics like communication skills, exploring future careers, learning how to create and achieve goals, and overall, it just creates a connection between, um, upperclassmen and underclassmen. So every Thursday, groups of juniors and seniors will go to the freshman and sophomore advisories and coach them through this program. And in the past few weeks, there have been college representatives that have visited the school. Um, we've had schools like Salve Regina University, Emmanuel College, and Lassell College. And these visits have been offered to juniors and seniors, and they're a really great way for students to learn more about what these schools have to offer. Um, last Tuesday, October eighth, was the annual open house for the high school, where parents followed their student schedules, um, they met with their teachers, and were able to see what their student is learning and what is going on in the classroom. Um, tomorrow is a half-day for the school district, and tomorrow morning, the senior class will be going to Wa Winit to take their class photo for the yearbook. So that's exciting. Um, and tomorrow is also the annual All Cape College Fair, which will take place at Barnstable High School from three-thirty to five-thirty PM, which is a field trip that is organized by the school. Um, this is another great opportunity for juniors and seniors to talk to representatives from college and gather more information about their opportunities. So that's all I have for tonight.
Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora.
Okay, so moving on to the next, um, next meeting, which is November twelfth.
Oh, do we want to report on committees?
Oh, yes, thank you.
If I may through the chair?
Yes, please do.
So, uh, Paul Hilton is stepping down after, I think, twenty years from Cape Cod Collaborative. So we had interviews last week, three candidates, um, all very competent. There's one that I'm, I will be voting upon that I thought, in my opinion, would do a wonderful job. So we'll be voting on Friday for who that will be. And then the Cape Cod Collaborative Professional Development is November fifth. And if I may, Beth, we are making that available to our teachers, correct?
Yes, we are. Yes. Um, yep.
There, particularly for specials teachers, there's opportunities for professional development that they do not often get. So I think it's a, it's a great opportunity. And that's all I have.
Is Marilda? I don't either. Thank you. Um, okay, so just the last item on the, uh, agenda is the agenda for the upcoming meeting. And Beth, do you want to talk through the, um, we're doing the workshop on the twenty-ninth?
Yes, we have a workshop on October twenty-ninth, which will be at the NIS cafeteria. Um, we find that it's easy to present there and, and have the opportunity to work in groups. Um, of course, it is open to the public. We welcome everyone to come, um, and see about our, um, our, our goals. There'll be two things happening at that meeting. One is, um, we will be presenting the, um, the twenty-twenty-four MPASS achievement and, uh, and accountability, uh, scores this year. And, um, and then also, I will be presenting my evidence for evaluation to, um, for, uh, this, this, uh, last year's evaluation. So those are the two things happening, and that will be on October twenty-ninth. Uh, then October, excuse me, then November twelfth, um, we have the, um, as you can see here, we'll be looking at budget. Um, and I apologize, my computer just went to sleep while I was talking.
That's okay.
One second. Um, you can read it certainly, Pauline. Um, those are the items that we do have on the agenda for the next time. Um, and, uh, um, so.
And just remind me when you want to do the, um, interviews for the, for the seat, the open seat?
So, um, we will have the interviews between October twenty-third, I think is Monday, uh, and probably November first. So it's not a big window, but we will, um, do our best to try and have interviews in either one or two meetings. Um, Katie will send out a list, or, uh, send, um, a, uh, list of dates that will work for us, um, and most likely, they'll be evening dates based on people's availability, we guess. So we'll be sending those out, and, um, we will need to come up with, um, interview questions. Each individual school committee member should come up with at least two or three questions to potentially, um, use in the interview. And, um, we will certainly publish those dates once we have, um, the availability to do so. It is a workshop, so we will most likely have those, uh, if we can, in person, and, um, those will be most likely at the NIS cafeteria if it's available.
Okay. And then, uh, the vote, final vote will be taken on November twelfth?
We can hold it on November twelfth, but we can also find an, an additional time for an open meeting if it would make more sense. Um, if that's possible and the school committee has the ability to, uh, come together again for a vote. Um, it can happen at any time, uh, that the school committee deems, uh, appropriate. It is an open meeting, which means, again, it is open to, uh, the, um, uh, open to the public to, to come. So we can certainly put dates out there and have that discussion through email around that date, whether it's the twelfth or whether it will be a different time, and it will be open to everyone.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Yep, that's, that's fine, um, Beth, with everyone here. So, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Well, um, without any further ado, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.